Good evening. This is the November fifteenth meeting of the Wareham School Committee. The meeting is being broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is being made by Mrs. West. The first order of business is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come down and speak?
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. My name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm a fifth grade teacher. I'm also the president of the Wareham Education Association. And I wanted to come down here to add some context and some depth to some remarks that I heard at the previous school committee meeting. It was on the topic of educator evaluation and on the idea of forcing it into a bell curve. What I heard and what was said was that basically there was surprise expressed at the number of educators who were rated as proficient or exemplary in the district of Wareham. So I did some research. I looked at the last year for which public data is available from the state. And I found in that year, 2015-16, that 311 public school districts had reported their evaluation data. If you add up the number of educators who were rated as proficient or exemplary, Wareham ranks 217th out of those 311. So if the concern is matching evaluations to test scores, it would seem to be that's where we belong, in the bottom third apparently. Below level three districts, below level four districts. We have fewer proficient or exemplary educators according to the data than do Boston or Worcester, for example. And associated with that was the idea of what was described as a bell curve. Seventy percent should be proficient, fifteen percent above, fifteen percent below. A bell curve, I'm sure you know, it's the statistical idea. If you take a random sample, most people cluster toward the average. Fewer people above, fewer people below. The further away from the average you get, the lower the number. So if I were to take 200 randomly selected people, ask them to run 100-meter dash, regardless of gender, or age, or physical condition, most people would be somewhere in the middle. There'd be some people toward the faster and slower times. But that's not really the right analogy for what we're doing in educator evaluation. Imagine, this will take some imagination, imagine I'm the coach of a university track team. 200 people come try out. That is not a random selection. That's 200 people who believe they're good at it and want to do it. We have tryouts. Some of them don't make the team. After the first practice, a few more people are cut. And I cut people throughout the season. At that point, if my team, their times create a bell curve, and 15% of them are needing improvement, the team hasn't failed, I've failed. I've failed in coaching them and training them. I've failed in my decisions about who to keep and who to cut. And I think that's a parallel to what we do here. Not everybody wants an interview to teach at the Wareham Public Schools gets an interview. Certainly not every interviewee gets hired. And then there is a never-ending cycle of evaluation where I've seen people who've been teaching for 30 days and people have been teaching for 30 years have their careers at Wareham ended through the evaluation system. I spend too much of my time as a teacher evaluating people. But one of the things I've learned and one of the things I believe is that it would be wrong and dishonest if I were to take the lowest 15% of my students and say that they failed regardless of what they did or how they did. It would be wrong to take 15% of the students with the highest grades and give them all E pluses regardless of what they did or how they did. And trying to do the same thing when it comes to teacher evaluation is just as wrong and We have avoided falling into that trap so far here in Wareham, and I hope we're not going to start doing that now. Thank you.
Next. Good news. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on down. Did someone else want to come? No? Okay. Good news. Come on down.
Chairwoman, my recorder is not on just to make notes. It's just failed, so I'm not recording.
The meeting is no longer being recorded by me, by Mrs. West. Technical difficulty.
I'm still recording.
Good evening. Dr. Shaverhood, School Committee. I'm Deanna Semple, and I'm the Vice President of the Wareham Education Association. And I'm here to celebrate National Education Support Professionals Day. Today is National Education Support Professionals Day. Paraprofessionals are some of the most dedicated people you will ever meet. And while you don't often hear a lot about them, it is absolutely clear that each and every one of them plays a vital role in the success of our students. Ask any teacher or administrator, and they will echo the same sentiment. We could not run our schools as effectively without their effort and dedication. In recognition of these special individuals, the Wareham Education Association would like to recognize all that our paraprofessionals do during the course of a day. As both a teacher and dean of students, I am in a unique position to witness the important roles our paras play in the day-to-day lives of our students. They are the first to greet the students off the bus in the morning. They assist with their breakfast, set a positive tone for the day. Each para has a specific and defined role in each building. Each role serves as a vital link between parent, teacher, and student. Paraprofessionals can be found almost anywhere in the building, whether it's out on the recess grounds, in the lunchrooms, or guiding students through the hallways. Some have explicit roles and are in charge of their safety and well-being. When after-school opportunities arise, they are usually the first ones to volunteer. Many of our paraprofessionals form lasting bonds with their students and families that transcend normal school days. A majority of our paraprofessionals also have obtained college degrees and could easily choose to find a more high-paying and lucrative position. However, these people choose to stay not because they have to, but because they love the work they are performing and are just as excited as the students are to come to school every day. They too have invested their lives in education. Simply put, schools can't operate without them. Teachers can't teach without them. And students can't succeed without them. I know I am proud to work alongside these devoted individuals, and I ask you to join me in recognizing all of their efforts on this special day. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree, what would we do without our paraprofessionals? Amazing, dedicated group of people, professional group of people that we depend on. Would anyone else like to say a comment?
First, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for letting me know about something I was not aware of, and I wholeheartedly agree with your thoughts. Thank you very much.
And if we could, a thank you to the superintendent. She recognizes this day. And the building principals this week are holding events to honor these paras on the theme of because of them we teach in paradise. We'll have something better next year. Thanks.
And the superintendent also has some good news?
I do. Thank you. I'm thrilled to announce that Mrs. La Sorsa won the $200 grand prize in hashtag hack your classroom contest. They looked at, the judges commented on the emphasis of student inclusion. The students created floor plans, and we will be publishing their name on their social channels. Congratulations to Mrs. La Sorsa and her students. My next piece of good news, I debated on when to read this because it's, but it fits under good news. Recently, if you were looking at DESI, you saw accountability determinations. Wareham was listed as level three, and we were quite surprised to see that. So we started doing some investigation, and we found out that there was some data that was incorrect. So we wrote an appeal to DESI. As you know, our high school is a level two. And I received this letter today from the Department of Education, letting us know that our appeal, they have accepted it. They've reviewed the data, and that they've determined that we were correct in what we asked for the appeal. Therefore, Wareham is no longer a level three school district. Our schools in middle school and elementary received the determination of no level because of our participation, and we met all the criteria. So we're very happy to announce that Wareham is no longer classified as a level three school district. So I think that's wonderful news. So thank you.
And classified as no level is a good classification. Just wanted to stress that.
I'm confused. It's not level two?
High school is level two.
No, but what is the...
Everyone else is no level.
No level.
And that's across the state unless you fall in level three, level four, or level five. And because we met all the benchmarks, we are no longer a level three for the state.
Only the state. I have a follow-up question. So I suspect most people watching from their homes don't realize that to be classified as level three is not based on your absolute performance. It simply means that you're in the bottom 20% of the state of Massachusetts. So if you, no matter how good you are, if you happen to be in the bottom 20%, you could still end up as level three. It's really quite arbitrary. I'll take no level, absolutely, especially then since that apparently is not an arbitrary conclusion, and we should feel good. And I appreciate the fact that you took the time to make the appeal.
Yes. And right now, I was also informed that this will be changed on the website when they make the new upload. And so in the very near future, our accountability will reflect no level in the middle school and elementary on the DESI website. So we're very proud of all the efforts of our teachers, of our paras, of our administrators, and we certainly thank our students for their work.
Okay. Next order of business, the minutes of the meeting, November 1st. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting November 1st?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Class size report is next.
Okay. Just to summarize, you received a copy of the class size report. What we have done is we listed all the classes in grades pre-K through four. And in the middle school, we gave you the class sizes and averaged by grade and then by department. And in the high school, it's a little bit more difficult. So you have the enrollment and the various class sizes. I'll just summarize for you. The average class size in kindergarten is 22.2. In first grade, it's 17.7. In second grade, it is 19.6. In fourth grade, it is, oh, sorry, third grade is 23.3, and fourth grade is 23.1. But class size in the middle school by grade, fifth grade is 20, sixth grade is 21.06, seventh grade is 20.69, eighth grade is 20.74. And in the high school, again, it's rather difficult to share just because of the various grades configurations coming in and out. What I would also share with you, it's fairly consistent from last year, and we've, it's pretty consistent. The only difference would be in kindergarten. Last year, we were at 17.3. We had 173 students. This year, we have 222 kindergarteners, and hence we've gone up to 22.2. So if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer the questions if I have the answers. If not, I will get back to you.
Oh, Mary.
So I just have a couple of questions. One was about the kindergarten classes. I noticed that one class in particular has 26. For the substantially separate? Okay. That's what I figured. I just wanted clarity on that. And then my other question that has to do with kindergarten is, are there paras in the kindergarten classes anymore? Are they back in?
Yes, we have four part-time paras in the kindergarten.
Oh, that's good. And how many classes, rooms?
We have 10 regular classrooms, and we have one substantially separate learning center for just K.
So they're sharing the paras then?
Yes. And the good news is the learning center we have in kindergarten, there are three paras in there who also push out to the classrooms.
Oh, that's good. Good, thank you.
So the four halftime are for regular ed? They're not the special ed paras that go in?
Right.
So they're in the regular kindergarten class, you say?
Thank you. And then I had a question about the pass. Is that the night school? Is that what that is? So do we have any class size for the alternative school at the high school? Is, that's still there, right, the co-op?
The co-op is at the middle school.
Oh, it's changed?
We moved it to the middle school last year.
Okay. The day program?
Oh, sorry, sorry. The day program. I will get those class sizes for you.
Okay, thank you. And one last question is, and if I'm reading, I may not be reading it correctly, but it looks like that some of the high school classes have as little as two students, is that correct in the class? Or I think there's even one class, some classes only have one student. Is that right? Am I reading that correctly?
I knew we were going to have some questions. So we asked Mr. Palladino to come because, again, his is a little confusing.
It is.
And I swear it's not by design. Many of the classes, there's different sections. So for instance, IB art, art two and art three are all taught together. So that's just one example. Some of the core math classes will have a core math 11 and 12, a core math 10. But if you can give me some more specifics as far as the class in question, I can give you more information on that.
I guess my general question would be, do you have a certain amount of, a criteria for how many students you need in a class to run the class, like colleges do?
Sure. We like to be in minimum double digits to get started with the class. And then, you know, it's really a student-driven process, so it's really based on the students. But obviously, we have to be realistic. You know, we want double digits whenever possible. It's kind of a moving target because the number may be 20 in May, and when we get MCAT scores in the summer, we have to, you know, adjust schedules. Those, all of a sudden, where everything is balanced in the, you know, high teens to low twenties, and you're feeling really good about it. And then over the summer, you're devastated as you get the MCAT scores for the underclassmen. So it's a, you know, but to answer your question, we do like to have, you know, a minimum double digits. And then sometimes, depending on staffing levels, we may even have to go up, you know, up into the twenties before we can push that into a classroom.
Right. And do you ever cancel classes because of...
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely. This, I'd say there were probably 25 classes that some students had interest in that we couldn't run.
Really?
But on a positive note, we have three venues for online learning. So if they're really interested in it, we can still make it happen. It's just in a different venue.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Jeff?
Looking at it a slightly different way, and I appreciate everything you just said. And I will say, I've recently learned firsthand from students how much electives matter to them. But if you took away department heads, took away sped teachers, just regular teachers with regular status, shall we say, okay? Teaching regular students, non-sped students. What is the range of responsibility, meaning for students? If, for example, is it someone, the lowest would be like 90, and the high would be 130? You see what I'm getting at?
You're talking caseload.
Yes, exactly.
I would, you want an average, or you want the range?
The range would be better.
I think you are pretty close with your numbers.
90 to 130.
I'd say probably 80 to 125 would be my estimate, just, you know, without running any numbers. But you're very close. And the whole idea was with, when we asked the teachers to teach an extra period was the number, the caseload wasn't going to change, but what we were going to be able to do is reduce the class size by about 20% because they were picking up an extra class to teach six versus the five they were teaching. So we were able to accomplish that and spread that out. So class size is much smaller, individualization can occur in the classroom, and we can offer more electives. Where, you know, before, we probably wouldn't look at an elective unless we had 20 students. Now, when we have 15, 16, we're saying, okay, if we can get a few more kids in there, we can really make this happen. And that, none of that would be possible without those teachers, and I forget how many years ago, I think it was two, three contracts ago, stepping up, teaching an extra period, allowing us to have that flexibility. And again, the next town over, same schedule, the teachers only teach five. So there's a lot of study halls going on in that school.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That it? Next, we have the budget review. FY19 budget review.
I don't know how we can discuss FY19 when we aren't even in FY18. That was a joke.
Oh, I know. I was just correcting. I wrote FY18 thinking that was correct. FY18 was on you.
I mean, we are in FY18.
We are? We're not in calendar year.
We're not in calendar year. You just got me nervous for a second. Am I planning the wrong year? All right, so when the slides warm up, I'm going to just take you through just a sort gentle-ish introduction to where we are in our budget. No numbers yet, but just to give you a sense of where we are in the process, some of the issues we see developing.
Madam Chair, I forgot, I had a question for the superintendent as long as Michael's working on his slides.
Go ahead.
Because I thought you were going to go on to the other report. The number 2360 for the total district, I must admit, took my breath away. I was sure it was going to be 24-something. So I did a little analysis and compared October 1st, or 2nd, or whatever, for 2013 versus October 2nd of 2017. Some of the numbers won't, didn't surprise me particularly. There was about 100% of increase in the number of charter school students, and there was a, almost 66% increase in school choice. But that's, but even when I took all the categories, homeschool, school choice, upper K, Bristol-Aggie, charter, it's still only explained during that period of time, 31% of the losses. And I thought to myself, where are the rest of the kids going? Are they literally not living in town? And that's why I asked you for the dropouts. Because if you take that, add the dropouts, which were 122 kids over that four-year period, that now, you're now only left trying to explain 40% instead of 70%, almost 70%. So I don't, first of all, I don't think we should minimize the impact that dropouts are having on the district, and especially over the last three or four years. I think parents, if you're listening, my parents would have had me, rather had me buried than drop out of school. So I beg you to think hard and long about allowing your kids to drop out of school. Having said that, I do think it's important to understand that that remaining 40%, literally, they don't live in Wareham anymore. So we are suffering from demographics of the town's population almost as much as we're suffering from what happens and the choices that people are making about where they're being educated. And I just think it's important people understand that.
In fact, that was a conversation that Mr. Palladino and I had today about ensuring that we've done everything to help our students prior to dropping out. And we're exploring some other options that we can put in place, whether it be the, allow them to take the test, where we put in a work-study program, something. Because we do know the importance of education and being able to reach these students. So this isn't going unnoticed, I want you to know that.
Yeah, I'm sure it isn't. And I think it's also important to notice that the significant majority of the dropouts are coming from the co-op, not from Mr. Palladino's high school.
And some of those, many of those are coming from out of town.
But they get counted against us.
They do.
Yes, it's school choice. The school choice going into the co-op.
That's a good point, too.
I just wanted to make that point.
All right. Thank you very much. So the budget process timetable, you've seen already, we've moved up a circle though. So where the next major milestone is the budget workshop on Monday, when principals and directors will be able to present their priorities for the next school year, especially those with an impact on the budget. And then we move into the public hearing on December 6th, when the committee and selectmen and finance committee are all invited to attend, and that will be the first major overview of our budget. As in previous years, or at least last year, we are developing the budget to be aligned with our strategic plan, and also for any decisions to change our budget to be evidence-based. Any new requests from principals and directors for programs or new positions must be clearly aligned with the strategic plan, be supported by the available data, and also have a plan for the evaluation of that decision so that we can know that we made the right decision and the money is doing what we hoped it would do. That said, I, you know, that said, we have not yet made any decisions yet about requests or ideas that we've seen. So these are the four principles from the strategic plan. I think two of them, particularly scholarship and stewardship, have a big impact on our budget, ensuring that we're able to implement transformational scholarship, and also the stewardship of the facilities and the buildings, the needs and the resources for the students to ensure that they're able to meet the aims of the strategic plan. So that's kind of underlying how we're developing the budget. I just wanted to give a kind of overview of some of the recent trends. So the recent trend is taken from the end-of-year report I presented at the end of last year, and then just how we expect that to change going into next year. So these are, down the left-hand column, you have the major account, which is one of the ways we split up our budget. More on that later. And also the recent trend, what we've seen recently, and how it looks for next, for going into FY19. Just wanted to help sort of give an idea of the pressures and trends that we're seeing underlying some of our budget decisions. I will go through these quickly as possible. So in administration, no major changes. Classroom and specialist teachers, so we have seen historically low cost of living increases there, and actually a reduction in overall numbers. And looking into next year, we've got obviously steps in lanes and a 3% increase in the contract. Guidance, counseling, particularly guidance and counseling has been a major priority of recent budgets, and that continues to be the case. Instructional leadership is an area which we have sought to reduce, also reduce the number of schools, and also to maximize expenditure on teaching. also reduce the number of schools, and also to maximize expenditure on teaching positions, and we'll continue to do that. Instructional supplies, and also this goes for, eh, operations and maintenance, which is the second one there, has been historically low and has been offset by expenditure from the town, town meeting on free cash and capital. But those needs haven't gone anywhere, so I expect those to be in the budget still. And I mean, obviously, payments out of district schools. We saw a major increase between two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen, while the rate of increase has slowed, we're still seeing growth in that area. Professional development is a priority. And we're trying to ensure we offset any reduction in grant through the LEA. And then lastly, pupil services, which includes transportation. And that has been, as you know from previous presentations, a major pressure in our budget, we expect it to continue to be so. And we are also investigating long-term solutions for transportation, and that may be an item we come back to the school committee to discuss options around a outsourcing and other ways you might reduce costs in transportation. So, any questions? I mean, I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you, I kind of wanted to give you a feel for where we're going. You know, we're not making any decisions yet. Any questions on any of these areas? I mean, if anything occurs to you in the next few, few slides, feel free to pipe up. I just want to talk a little bit about how we present our budget. So through conversations and discussions we've had with the superintendent's budget advisory committee, we're looking at presenting the budget in a slightly different way this year. So, the idea would be to present the budget in two main buckets, if you like, one of fixed costs, and those are costs which do not significantly, which are not significantly dependent on the number of students. So for example, the cost of heating the building, the cost of the principal, doesn't go up or down that much with their number of students. I mean, heating, there may be some moderate trend, but you've got to heat the building, no matter how many students are in it. And that's against variable costs, those which change, which are more dependent on the number of students. Again, it's not a direct relationship, so you lose one teacher, I mean, you lose one student, you don't necessarily lose one teacher. But there is definitely a relationship between the number of teachers and the number of students and other costs. And this is a metric process we're still developing, but at a first pass at the numbers, you know, you do, I'm seeing a split of around twenty percent being in fixed costs and eighty percent in variable costs, because so much of our expenditure is in teaching, it's because so much is in salaries. So those are numbers we're still developing. But the sorts of categories which are under these headings, so fixed cost is utilities, the principal and office, building maintenance, and custodial. And then under variable costs, it's instructional leadership, specialized teachers and regular ed, higher professionals, and then other support services and supplies. So I think one of the, one of the most useful things about this process actually is just a simplification of the categories. So, I think this, one, two, three, four, uh, ten or so categories are easier, but easier to get your head around than some of the major accounts that we've used in the past, and I think that's going to be really valuable. And what we'll be, what we're looking to measure these against is the number of students and the number of specialized students, because those are what drive some of the services. And I think for us, this is really starting off point in the discussion. These things aren't a decisive, so an increase in specialized students doesn't necessarily mean an increase in specialized teachers, and vice versa. But it does beg the question as to why we're seeing, you know, changes in one direction or another, and what it means for us. So. Jeff? Do you want to, any questions before I go on?
Jeff?
So I must confess, I'm, I'm very surprised that you're eighty-twenty. I thought it was going to be closer to fifty, the twenty is the one, is the number that really surprises me.
I mean, so this is, it is early days, so I'm still working on these figures.
I get that, I'm not going to hold you to that number.
Alright, thank goodness.
Uh, but I do have a question about the, the principal and office category. How inclusive is that? For example, does it basically include all administrative support in the building?
Yeah.
It does?
Yes.
So any secretarial support?
Yep.
Uh, would be in that, would it include the, any, any AP?
No, uh, it would include assistant principals, yes.
It would?
Yep.
Okay. So you've got a fair amount of human beings in the green area, if you've counted all secretarial support and all APs. Um, how about, uh, department heads?
No, they'd be instructional leadership.
That's instructional leadership, so the presumption is that that category would contract with the, not with the number of teachers, but with the number of students.
Yeah, well.
On the assumption that contracting students will contract teachers, which means
Well.
It's a little gray in my mind.
Yeah, well, I think that's why I sort of stressed, I don't think this will be decisive, I think it's a jumping off point for discussion. So if we see numbers, students going down, but, you know, expenditure in a specific area not going down, it asks, why not? It doesn't say, it shouldn't.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just asking.
No, yeah, yeah, well.
Okay, um, just, just so I can understand where you are at your first draft.
Yeah.
Shall we say?
And I think one of the things about this is, it's very easy to go down a rabbit hole on this and end up with hundreds of metrics, which would be of a lot of use to somebody sitting in a room somewhere, but it will be difficult to have a discussion about it. So I think this is about having a high-level discussion around kind of broad areas that we can all wrap our heads around, without having to read, you know, not without me having to give you hundreds of pages of slides.
Is the school resource officer assigned, well, that's, that's not assigned at one school, is it? So where is that person?
So that is in, uh.
I'm getting too fine a detail.
Yeah.
If you want to tell me to shut up, that's okay, you won't be the first person. Just something for you to think about. Just something for you to think about.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're in custodial, actually, because I think.
Oh, I won't tell Carl that.
Security and, well, security is one of those things which doesn't necessarily change that much with the number of students.
Exactly.
It's not like, if we had multiple security officers, it might, but one, it's hard to have less than one, so eh, it's in fixed cost.
Okay, so right now you think it's in the green?
Yeah, and if it's not, I'm going to move in.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you know, I've really, obviously, and is the nature of the way our budget process works, what I'm focusing on here is our needs, and, you know, the demand that we have, and what we're not really talking about is the money that's available. And that's something we've started to have discussions with town administrator on, and I know he's discussed this with the selectmen. From what we understand, he is not expecting to see the increase in revenue that he had, that we saw last year, which is what gave us a modest increase in our budget. And so if revenue doesn't increase, but expenditure continues to with healthcare and all those other things, that means the increase we saw this year of around six hundred thousand is not expected going into next year. So we expect to see a, you know, we expect that we would not be able to deliver the level service budget from the discussions we're having with the town administrator at the moment. But, that's all still up in the air as well, but I'm still let you know that's part of the outlook. Oh, sorry, I don't mean to end on a somber note.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Jeff?
What is, um, Mass Municipal Telling, uh, or anybody saying about state revenues? And therefore the, what, what used to be called lottery aid now is general aid and, uh, chapter seventy. Is there any predictions regarding that?
So from my discussions, I mean, I've not seen any, there's no discussion of significant changes to what we've seen in recent years.
Fair enough, but level funding, general aid and chapter seventy is, would be highly unusual.
So we've seen recently, so there's a, because of our enrollment declining, we see a, we get the holders level with a per pupil increase, and I think that's what Derek's forecasting, or the town administrators forecast for next year. But, some of that's still to be unpacked. And I, I mean, that's a short way of saying, we don't really know yet, we're still working on it.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
The next agenda item is the report of the assistant superintendent.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to present tonight. I am grateful that I have the necessary qualifications to understand the public schools are complex, multi-dimensional systems filled with human beings that want to have a positive impact on the lives of others. Prior to my presentation, I would like to address a few things. Number one, Albert Einstein said, quote, "The significant problems we have cannot be solved at the same level of thinking with which we created them," end quote. When people look at the past to determine what should happen in the future, it is not done in the spirit of sustained positive change, but rather a way to provide themselves some comfort. The work ahead is challenging, uncomfortable, and will cause great discourse. However, this is what needs to happen to transform the system. This is what the superintendent and her team have been asked to do. When I arrived in Wareham, I happened upon a report by the Department of Education. It was entitled Wareham Public Schools District Review, it was dated February two thousand and twelve. This report was created prior to Dr. Shaverhood's tenure. The report was delivered January two thousand and thirteen, and it stated that the Wareham Public Schools had the following issues. Barriers such as problems with funding, capacity, and planning were blocking the way toward progress. Reduction of staff at Wareham Middle School in fiscal year two thousand and twelve in response to a district-wide budget deficit that increased class sizes. Differentiated curriculum and programs to support higher-achieving students were not provided, and a consist, consistent structure for curriculum development and revision had not been implemented. In most observed classes, instruction in the Wareham Public School was not rigorous, engaging, or student-centered. The absence of infrastructure to facilitate timely data analysis reduced the usefulness and effectiveness of the district assessment program. Teacher supervision and evaluation practices were largely ineffective. Most teachers were evaluated too infrequently, and the evaluations that were completed did not encourage either the improvement of instruction, instructional quality, or professional growth. Number two, we are a team, and the superintendent's evaluation is in fact a reflection of the work I do as well. I believe it's important for me to explain what may have not seemed explicit and respond with the truth, facts, data for the purpose of clarification. A, in the superintendent's portfolio that I have right here, provided to the school committee filled with evidence, FAST reports detailing all of the scores as well as in-depth analysis of that data were included. As a result of the statement that FAST was not presented, I will again provide detailed information tonight. B, as a teacher and leader, I have been taught the principles of backward design. Backward design was initially introduced by Grant Wiggins and Jay McTie in their book, Understanding by Design. They suggest that you plan with the end in mind. In their book, Schooling by Design: Mission, Action, and Achievement, they clearly acknowledge the need for, quote, "a clear and consistent focus on the long-term mission of a schooling, enabled, enabling learners to achieve worthy intellectual accomplishments as reflected in their ability to transfer their learning with understanding to worthy tasks and in their habits of mind." Our plan was to first work in concert with the high school to define where our students should be. As we were planning for the end in mind, we also understood the needs of early elementary and added OWL's curriculum to preschool, Focus K two at Deccus, and new math programs were collaboratively chosen K through six, following an extensive pilot. After examination, we collectively began to learn more about the philosophical and pedagogical practices of the International Baccalaureate. Due to the reputation, global connection, student-centered learning approach, as well as the current studies indicating the success IB has had with low-income demographics, we decided to pursue IB. Once we knew where we were going, we could then provide the right kind of strategies at the right time to all students. If we had begun with early elementary first, the processes that we chose to implement, with great success so far, may not have been so robust. C, I understand the school committee expressed concerns about the many educators rated proficient as related to student achievement on MCAS. The educational leaders and department chairs work diligently to provide effective feedback to our educators. The amount of time and consideration evaluators provide with walkthroughs, formative and summative evaluations that often include extensive narratives encouraging instructional improvements and/or professional growth is commendable. The result of this presentation should help provide some clarity as to why our leadership teams find many of our teachers proficient in their day-to-day practices. As I have stated before, the issues we face are systems issues. The system is comprised of all stakeholders in Wareham, and we are all responsible for the intellectual, physical, and mental health of our children. The schools have and continue to actively acknowledge their responsibilities collecting and analyzing data, changing practices, assessing students by standard, and working to provide the children of Wareham with an education second to none. Thank you. This is the formative assessment system for teachers. We implemented this, um, basically this has defined what FAST does and who they are. Um, their job really is to make a meaningful difference in the lives of students and positive difference in the lives of teachers. They're, they're headquartered in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and they do a lot of work at the University of Minnesota. And their whole idea is to take research and then put that into practice, assessment, assessment intervention, and hopefully gather results as a result of their work. Prior to FAST, um, elementary schools participated in two assessment measures here in Wareham called Grade and G-Made. Students had to bubble in using a number two pencil into scan sheets to gather that information. Um, the district had only one machine and it was in central office, a Scantron machine. And so all of the, the thousands of these, um, sheets, worksheets came to central office and someone, one person, had to scan all of that information into that Scantron, which would then be brought back to the teachers to assess and analyze. And a very arduous task, uh, to say in the least, and so the data, although gathered, was not necessarily received back in a timely fashion, where teachers could, um, make decisions based on what they learned from that data. Um, and since the obvious, um, abundance of technology and where we are with technology, we've been able to implement the FAST system, which is basically taking the similar assessments vetted, like a DIBELS and other things like that that are well-known, and putting them on the computer so that the results become automatic, right? So no one's waiting to find out where students are at what time, and it's in real time, which has been quite, um, incredible, I think it's given us a wealth of information. We began giving these assessments in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, and we now have three years of results. Comparing the second and third year data was essential, and it assisted as we began to collaborate with staff and that we had a multifaceted, it was multifaceted and complex problems that we were faced with. Because as we learned more about the data and dug in more deeply, we started to realize that there were, um, things that we could put in place that were, that would hopefully make a difference in the lives of our kids. We also have a consulting company called Ideal Consulting, and what they do is take our data and then they run it through a system called SPS, similar to the SPSS system that you would do to analyze statistical data in a report. And they then take that and turn it around and are able to project out where we are and what we need to do and how we are compared to everyone else in the country. So it's very interesting and fascinating information that we gather. Basically, what FAST measures is reading and math. And we are looking at skill level acquisition, acquisition as compared to the school themselves and to the norm, which would be the larger group. And then growth analysis also compared to the school and to the norm. So, I, I don't think that this is a big issue on the school committee, but focusing on K and one, according to much of the research, is very, very important. Those skills that we, that children receive by the end of first grade are essential for their continued success as they move through school. And so those skills have to be secure, there's. There's no question about that. And much of the research has said third grade or the end of third grade, but more recently they've been going back and thinking that really and truly it needs to be by the end of first grade, that those results have to be strong and impactful. So we've spent a lot of time looking at what we could do to help our students get where they need to go. Skills that poor readers lack, entering first grade with little phonemic awareness, decoding monosyllabic words, word recognition exposure to print, listening skills, and reading experiences both in and out of schools. Schools can make up the difference with proper intervention that remedies quickly, identifies areas of concern, correct coding issues, and reading books aloud to children. And we've made many data-driven decisions based on the information that we've gathered. We've purchased foundations, and that's supposed to say for grades K and 1, sent staff to training. We have active implementation of Focus K2, and we're currently in our second year of full implementation. We piloted in 2016. Deanna Jump Math Program for K and 1, this is our second year of implementation. And we have CSS Consulting providing multi-dimensional interventions for our students that began in February of 2017, and now in grades pre-K through 4. Area preschools have also come to Deaconess to see the work. So this is some analysis from last year's, and also, so it looks at kindergarten and then grade 1, the same group of kids. So as you can see here, you can see the data, basically what it says, where students were and where they are. And what was most exciting about this was that there was a summer in between, which I thought was pretty remarkable, that the students in K had held on to the skills that they had learned, albeit some of them were in Boost, which was a phenomenal program, I believe, that helped students secure those skills. But this data speaks volumes to the work that we're doing, in my opinion. And again, with sight words, the same information. This is the information on letter sounds for kindergarten. So when they started, 64% of our students were in the red, and at the end, in the spring, it was 15% in the red. So clearly, our students learned their letter sounds, or many of them. And these are some of the subtests that we gave to our current kindergarten class. Concepts of print, onset sounds, letter names, and letter sounds. So our analysis of growth, I thought would be fascinating to take a look at, and it actually led me to the conclusion that when our teachers are being evaluated, if you look at the growth compared to ourselves, it's greater than what we are as compared to the norm. That's where the whole idea of it being a systems problem comes into play. But if you're evaluating teachers that are making progress according to the data and according to the growth as compared to that similar, the same group of students in that school, then evaluators are watching people work hard to move our students ahead. And so I think that's where there may be a bit of disparity in that data set. So if you see toward where we are according to the norm, and then when you look at where we are to the benchmark, which is growth to the benchmark, which is what it looks like when we're comparing that to ourselves, the results are higher overall. I actually gave you a sheet of paper that hopefully helps. You could just go from one of the groups to the other. And it's interesting to look at that and to see the difference. So when we look at the work that we're doing compared to ourselves, we are clearly moving our students ahead. But when we look at that compared to the norm, we're not. And so knowing that and understanding that helps us to better inform our instruction. But what evaluators are seeing day in and day out are teachers working hard to help our students reach goals, to move someplace. And basically, these are slides of all of that. Very exciting. I did it mostly by school and by subtest. Grades 1 in January through grade 8 do A reading and A math by the computer. K and halfway through 1 and 1 actually continues the early reading. They do early reading three times a year and early math. So I broke it out so that you could see the scores per school, and I clustered them by what test that they took. See the math for grades 1 and 2 compared to the norm, significantly different. As you move 3 and 4, same thing. Any questions?
So I do need to make a comment on the report that you brought up, because that was a report you brought up last year as well. So I went in and I took a look at the report myself, and it also states in there how we were working on improving things, including, I believe RTI was mentioned in it as well. So there were good parts to that report, just wanted to mention.
I just was looking at the last page in the recommendations. And that's what it says in that last page on the recommendations.
And so I have a couple of questions anyways about your presentation. One is the CSS Consulting. I was under the understanding that it was KJS Consulting in Maine.
It's CSS. KJS is a separate program.
Okay.
It's for pre-K.
Okay. All right. So that was my misunderstanding, because when I Googled the CSS, I don't get anything. So what would I find it under?
You can look under Carrie Thurston.
Okay.
T-H-U-R-S-T-O-N.
I also Googled her name, too, and what came up was the KJS.
Whatever information you need, I can send to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Just let me know what you need.
Okay. Just the site, the CSS site.
All right.
Okay. So that, you know, so that was a concern that I had, that that's what I saw, and it only seemed like she focused on early literacy, so I was a little concerned what's happening then in 3rd and 4th grade, because I know she's also consulting in there.
Oh, yes. Got you. Well, that's a separate, she's part of that program, but it's a separate program.
Okay. All right. So that would be great if you could send me that information.
Sure.
And then my other question would be, and maybe I was wrong, but when I looked in the binder there, I could have sworn that it was, one, presented in a staff presentation. That was, it was, the format was within a staff presentation by Ideal Consult.
Ideal Consulting analyzes all of the FAST data.
Right, no, I know. I used to deal with them as well.
Oh, okay.
Right. We used to have them here before.
Okay.
As well as, we also had, at one time, foundations in, at Hammond School, the whole school was doing foundations. So it's a great program, and I'm glad to see it back.
Yeah, me too.
So, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there was K through 8 data in there, in that presentation. I think it was just focused on...
In here?
Yeah, I think.
It's, it's...
I mean, maybe I read it wrong.
It's thick. Like, it's, it's this whole section.
Right. Yeah, I know. I saw that.
What I would be happy to do is pull it out and send it to you if you would like to see it.
Sure. Just to look at it again.
I have 6, and it goes all the way through every grade. 7, right here.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, I don't, I don't recall seeing all that. All right. Maybe I just...
That's what I used when I did my report. I read that. That's the most important binder.
That's okay. I mean, it's available, so.
But it was, it was through a staff presentation, is that correct? It was a copy of a staff presentation?
No. It was what's given to us to analyze our data. We use it quite frequently to share with teachers and look at results and look at where we need to go. So it was just the data that we thought would be interesting for you to have and look at as how we're looking at FAST data and how that is informing what we're trying to do.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Andrea, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it appears that the kindergartners coming in this year were at a higher level than last year.
Seems like it. Isn't that exciting?
Yes, it is. Can you attribute that directly to the preschool curriculum?
I would have to, I would have to tease those students out first, and then I could let you know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to say yes, but I'd have to, I'd have to tease them out, for sure.
Okay.
There's something I'd like to add at this time for Andrea to talk about what we're also doing, because we know the importance of preschool education, and we want to level the playing field as much as we can for the students entering K to see that they get the same type of quality education that we, they are receiving when they have their preschool in Wareham. And could you explain what we're doing in that area? Or do you know what I mean? Working, we're working with the preschools.
Yes. Deaconess has done a lot of work, actually, inviting the preschools in to come in and talk and meet and watch. And Carrie Thurston is open to helping them and going over and doing whatever she can to be of service. And she's not charging for it. She's just giving it as part of what she's doing for us.
We've also sent people out to the various preschools to network, and we'll be following up. We have a December meeting coming. The goal is to make sure that our students, when they come to us, are ready. And part of that is sharing what we're doing, sharing the reading readiness skills, and working collaboratively. And so we've put a great deal of effort into that in the last year and a half, two years.
And working with the transitions. I was a part of the meeting, so I know. Working with the transitions and working with the parents of these students coming in, having, having meetings at the area preschools, too, to bring that information to the parents. We want to make sure that we're all one community when the students enter, enter our kindergarten, and we want to give them the same curriculum that we, that we have. And the area preschools have been very, very receptive, very, very receptive to them.
So following up on my colleague's comment about preschool as well as Judy's, the more we can tell parents about the likelihood of success with or without preschool, the more important we become to parents. I mean, if we could, for example, and I'm not just picking a number out of a hat, because it could be extraordinarily high, if we could tell them that the likelihood of achieving proficiency by the time they, they got out of elementary school, okay, was 50% higher if they came prepared to learn when they, when they got to Mrs. Chandler's Deaconess School. I mean, if I'm a parent, I'm thinking, wow, I have to do this. There's just no way. I'm abusing my child if I don't do this. So I think we need to make it a high priority to tease out, as you said, exactly what the impact of preschool is on the data that you presented, which, as usual, is provocative and interesting. So thank you for being here. First question, how much, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but it's almost anecdotal, how much credence do you give a 30-year-old report with a cohort that declined from 129 students to 54 students during the course of the study?
I think the reason why I liked this study in particular was because it was statistical. It actually used numbers, and it wasn't, it was more of a statistical study rather than a narrative study or a case study, for example. And so I appreciated that there were numbers connected to the success rates of a student that they followed for longitudinal, it was longitudinal study, which was also helpful because it followed that same group of students for a long, long period of time. And so there were elements of that study that I thought made it more relevant than other studies that I may have found. And I'm not one to promote older studies. I teach research at Bridgewater, and I always tell my students, current research, current research. So when I pulled the study and I started to read it, I thought, well, it's, it's still significant, right? It still resonates, and it still has enough information that I think it provided a look into what kids need to be successful readers.
I'm just surprised there weren't bigger and more recent studies, given the amount of the billions of dollars that were spent.
There are. There are. There are quite a few. But I liked the way in which, because I was presenting, and she gave certain criteria around what was, what meant success in a very pointed way, and I appreciate that a great deal. When I look at the data walls that we have now for grade 1, and I see decodable words in red, 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 all the way down the list, I know that that's a very important skill that our students need to be able to do, right? And so, so then I get back to Carrie, if she already knows, but of course, I get back to her and I say, we really need to work on decodable skills with our, with our students. Like, that's a priority, obviously, because I know that that's continuous through the research. And so, of course, she says, yes. You know, that's obvious, but it's that kind of information that helps us all stay focused on what we actually need to do right now to help our students, so.
There was a very depressing line in that same page. If they're struggling in first grade, it doesn't seem to matter what, the 2nd and 3rd grade and 4th grade, and for all we know, every teacher after that does, they're going to be struggling in school, period. They better learn it in first grade. Hear that, Mrs. Chandler? No pressure. They better learn it in first grade, because no matter how good our teachers are, they're just going to continue to struggle, because if they get out of first grade, they're just, .88? I mean, that's pretty...
Significant.
Really significant correlation. And it's, and it was a very depressing number.
Well, it is if you don't think you can do anything about it.
Well...
But it isn't if you think you can.
I suppose that's the good news. Right? That's the good news.
Correct.
This is 30 years ago. Maybe we've actually learned to do something about it.
Correct.
Right. I'll take hope from that. Okay. Fair enough. The MCAS data itself, we've talked about sped, excuse me, we've talked about preschool. I was, and I know this is, these are determinations not made by you, but I was not pleased to see that they have these artificial groupings. I would much rather see 0 to 20, 20 to 40, 40 to 60, because that would, I have no idea, for example, looking at the first analysis of growth slide for normative categories of growth, early reading, for example. I have no idea what percentage of the 38%, that is, in the 30 to 85 percentile, well, that's, that's a huge group.
It's large.
So what percentage of that 30 to 40 really belongs in the yellow as compared to the green? I have no idea. So if there's any way they would be willing to get that for us, I would be...
I'll look more, they're also updating all of their services and their analytics behind the scenes, and this report is actually, the growth report, they've just released when I started to put this presentation together. So I think that I will take another look, because it keeps changing a bit as I move, because they're updating their behind-the-scenes, so.
I mean, we, we own the data, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right. So...
But they own the system of analyzing that data, so.
Oh, no, I understand that. But to me, there's nothing more important than growth, and therefore, if we can better understand growth, and this raised as many questions as it, as it answered, but a really interesting report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting that again. Acceptance of gifts.
I recommend the acceptance of the following gift. Dictionaries for all 3rd grades...
Dictionaries for all third grade students at Minot Forest from the Wareham Elks Lodge.
Oh, do I have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0.
Thank you. $1,500 donation from Sherri Lindsay of Lindsay Restaurants to purchase tickets to a live theater event for the Wareham Middle School drama students.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
12 smart-
5-0-0.
12 smart snaps from Lowe's Home Improvement to the high school to be used for lockdown to secure doors. Ask for approval.
So moved.
Sec.
It begs the question, does anybody know exactly how they're going to be used?
They strap on the door and it keeps the door from opening during the lockdown procedures.
And they figured out how to make that happen? That's interesting. Because in the Alice program, they talk about bars and that sort of thing. If they can make it work, it's got to, anyway, yes, second or whatever you need.
Second.
And then a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0.
Okay, moving on. I would ask for approval of bill and warrant payments. Payroll week ending November 4th, 2017, in the amount of $134,343.88 and November 11th, 2017, in the amount of $846,042.82. Ask for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill warrants, November 16th, 2017, in the amount of $176,241.20 and November 20th, 2017, in the amount of $77,366.25. I would ask for approval.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0.
Thank you. Before moving on to presenting my goals, I would like to address Kennedy Lane. May 1st, 1989, there was an application made to the planning board to build a new high school. June 5th, 2008, 2008, 1989, excuse me, the decision of the planning board, number two in the rendering, access to Kennedy Lane shall be prohibited to all but emergency vehicles on call and such prohibit-
Prohibition.
No, not prohibition.
That's what it said.
Prohibiting shall be enforced by the installation of a sign at the entrance to Kennedy Lane which shall state that access is only for emergency vehicles by the installation of a crash or breakaway gate which shall be constructed at the point where the school property meets Kennedy Lane. This was designed as an emergency outlet only. For some reason, it was opened and on December 11th, 2014, the school department was instructed by the town to close the gates at Kennedy Lane. As this has been a concern of ours, we have approached the town and requested an appeal to the decision. However, on October 3rd, 2017, the road commissioners voted to let the request go into perpetuity. The school was not informed that this would be discussed and was not present at the meeting. I spoke to the town administrator this morning and the gates will not be open. It is not a decision that the school department, the school committee, or the board of selectmen is able to make. We're not authorized. It goes back to the original planning board in the fact that this was for an emergency outlet design only. Any questions? Yes?
First of all, thank you for that report. Secondly, is there any truth to the fact that it represents a safety problem for our faculty and students?
You mean not having a second?
A second egress.
Well, certainly now, when you look at school buildings, there's always two.
Yeah. It comes to mind.
Yes.
And this report is also pretty, not the report, but the prohibition, which I think is a legitimate word.
It is, it's the word.
Is from 1989, you know, a lot of things have changed since 1989.
Most certainly.
And if our faculty and students are at risk because of a decision that was made in 1989, then I don't think we should take this lying down. That's really all I'm saying. I'm not saying we can unilaterally change it, but I'm just saying we ought to speak loudly about it if there truly is a safety issue. Has the fire department, for example, weighed in on this? They weighed in on the tennis courts, as they rightly should, why wouldn't they weigh in on this?
They have not weighed in, to my knowledge, but that's not to say that they haven't. We would be, I think the route that we need to go would be to get in front of the road commissioners and to have the discussion. That's who made the decision. That seems to be where it lies, leaving it closed.
Understood, thank you.
I guess I want to add one. I spoke to Peter Titlebaum, Board of Selectment Chair, about the same issue, even though it's not in the jurisdiction. He just wanted me to know that that is the, for emergency vehicles, if there is a huge emergency at the high school, if there's a mass emergency of the kind we hope never happens, that's in our plan. That's the way to get, that is the way to get into the, into the school buildings. So, and that's very important to have a way to do that. You have to have plans that you file, what do you do in case of this emergency, that emergency? One thing that's been constant is that that is our emergency exit. I do agree that there should be another exit, but I'm just trying to show you, I don't think that's a viable solution because of the reason it's being used. We have to have an emergency exit.
So the short answer to the parent is, we will try and get an audience, but it's with the road commissioners, not the selectmen or the school committee. We don't have any authority.
Right.
And they can request their own audience and make their own case if they so choose as well.
And an alternative would probably, you know, because that's the emergency, but yes, it is up to-
I'm not sure where the-
I don't either.
Through the swamp.
I don't, I don't have, you know, I don't have that knowledge of the terrain of the area.
Thank you again for that report.
Could I just add something? The recent conversation about Kennedy Lane hasn't been as an emergency entrance or exit.
That's correct.
It's been more of a convenience. So I would just say, I mean, it's been a couple of years since I've had to drive on biking drive, but I think that there are some improvements that maybe could be made to traffic flow on biking and drive. And maybe that is another way to address the concerns of the parents who have brought this up.
Sounds like a good idea to me. Does anyone else have anything to say on that issue? Thank you for your report, Dr. Shaverhood.
You're welcome. Alright, now moving to goals. I'm sorry that they're a little bit out of order. I would go to goal number one. It is professional practice. It would be to support the Minot Forest building project. We will continue to develop and strengthen the capital plan. We'll keep, certainly work to keep everyone updated and if you have any questions about my goal, I'd be happy to answer that. Any questions on number one? Okay, seeing none, I go to number two. Student learning. The superintendent will ensure all students have access to challenging, engaging curriculum instruction that is both rigorous and meeting the needs of individual students. Certainly here, we will be looking at providing students with the curriculum they need to be successful in school, to provide them the supports that they need to reach the goals that we set. We'll be looking at data. We will be constantly reflecting on how do we improve and how do we meet the needs of all students. Do you have any questions on number two? Okay, seeing none, I go to number three. District improvement. To improve academic performance for all students with a specific focus on student subgroups. Certainly here, we'll be looking at our subgroups such as special ed, ELL students, and providing our students the support they need, again, to be successful. We've looked at the staffing of behaviorists, we've looked at social workers because we do know that our students come with us with some social emotional needs. We know those needs to be, needs must be addressed if they are to make effective progress. Do you have any questions on goal number three?
Yes, Jeff?
So I'm the proverbial skunk in the room. First of all, I appreciated Mr. Fitzgerald coming tonight and as usual, talking to us in a thoughtful and articulate way. In fact, he and I exchanged brief emails today. There are two problems with his conversation about, I guess what he would say, the bell curve. One is, if you apply a filter as he did with runners, as long as the cohort stays large enough, you're still going to have a bell curve. All you've done is moved the bell to the right. I mean, that's mathematically what you've done, but you still have a bell. The second problem is to equate teaching with running. I have a lot of respect for Usain Bolt and his achievements, but I guarantee you, he would say he was born an incredible runner. It takes a tremendous amount of dedication, hard work, and education to become a teacher. And the more complex the task, the more likely you are not only to have a bell curve, but in fact to have a flatter bell curve, meaning the variation in performance of a complex task produces a tremendous amount of variability in that performance. It is, to me, degrading to suggest to the outstanding teacher, or let me be even more specific, someone works their butt off, gets great reviews, gets great student growth, and for whatever reason ends up proficient, and somebody else does a relatively half-hearted job and also gets rated proficient and their student growth is mediocre to poor. How do you think that teacher feels being lumped in with the same teacher? I guarantee you, having talked to teachers, they don't like it. Now, this is not a union problem, this is not an association problem. I have great respect for Bryan and the Teachers Association. This is a management problem. This is a courage problem. So, I told you, I'm the skunk in the room, but the truth is that there is a bell curve out there, folks. It exists whether we like it or not and I refuse to demean the great teachers that I have met in this district by suggesting they're all about the same. They are not. And furthermore, there is no data that is presented to me that tells me they're all about the same. And I don't mean one year of data, I mean 10 years of data. I've been doing this for even longer than that. I don't like the fact that I'm saying this, but I have a fiduciary responsibility to parents and children, most especially children, to make sure that this is recognized. So every year that I see, and by the way, let's get the record straight, I talk to all sorts of school committee members. Mr. Fitzgerald's reference to other school districts, do you know how many school districts out there do a terrible job? They have essentially given up on the evaluation process and they just keep reporting numbers into the state and the state does nothing with it, as usual, because they don't really have the capacity to make a positive impact. So I don't really want to hear what other school districts are. My fiduciary responsibility is to Wareham, only Wareham. So if I don't see something in this goal that says we're going to take seriously the identification of less effective teachers, and they are there and we know they are there and we can see the data that tells us they are there, I cannot support this particular goal.
Can I just make a comment? I think the evaluation of teachers is an extremely complex task. One is, how do you compare a teacher who is teaching honors class to a teacher who is teaching special ed by student growth? And then how do you compare, and there's nothing against art teachers or specialists, but how do you compare an art teacher to a regular general ed teacher? So there are still, I believe, a lot of glitches in the teacher evaluation and then we also add in their guidance counselors and nurses are all, I believe, still under the same evaluation system. So in my opinion, is a very, as I said, a complex system that is not, at this time, fair really to all the teachers. So to look at that as a measure of the superintendent's evaluation, I disagree.
And Mary, I agree with you. You also evaluate teachers, don't you?
Yes, yes.
And that's what I did in my job and I evaluated a great number of teachers through the years and you've done the same thing and I share the same view. I don't think that that belongs in the superintendent's evaluation. Does anyone else have any remarks about that or opinions?
I don't have an opinion. I would just say thank you for pointing out that side that I would not have considered.
Okay. Would you like to move on?
I'm not sure, I think so. Goal number four, family and school engagement. I will facilitate communication system that will inform, listen, and update members of our school community of procedures, policy, academic programs, and opportunities as well as concerns. We will look at outreach, written, social media, and any communication that deems necessary. Also, when we do our surveys, we will certainly reflect on what the surveys have shared with us and address those issues. I have a superintendent's communication advisory group. We've had one meeting for the public. We certainly are, will be planning another meeting and we look for input on how to outreach and share the information and good news and opportunities that are happening in our district. Those are my four goals that I would offer for submission. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Are there any questions? Any more questions?
Is there a process where in the middle of the year, there could be some type, not a formal evaluation, but some type of visit to the goals to-
There is a mid-cycle review, it wasn't done last year.
Okay.
When would you like to do that?
I'm new at this, so I'll leave that, you know, up to, it just seems that it would be helpful instead of just once a year to just see where we're at somewhere in the middle of the year. So when do you think that would be appropriate?
How about April? April work?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have any more discussion on the superintendent's goals? Do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's goals?
I'm sorry, I guess I do have one more question. I'm sorry, I guess I do have one more question.
Absolutely.
So this year, when we did the evaluation, the goals were weighted differently.
That's right. Should we accept first and wait them afterwards? I believe that's what we did.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's goals?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
Abstain? Four, one, zero. And now we have the weighting of the goals. I know that the goals that had to do, and people, I want people to have discussions. I'm just starting it. The goals that had to do with student learning and professional practice, I think. Were those the two that were rated higher last year?
Yes.
I think it was...
No, that's not true.
District improvement. It was district improvement. Goal... Definitely, it was district improvement. It has to go with the academics. Student learning and district improvement. And they were rated higher at 12 points each and the other two were rated eight points each. I don't know. I thought that that worked well for the... But I would like to hear others' opinions and what they would like, if they would like to see something else, the reasoning.
Based on the way they appear on our sheet, which Kim suggested was not the correct order, but I'm recommending 12, eight, 12, eight.
That's what we did last, yeah, last year.
Because I think both the first one and the third one, in the order that I'm looking at...
Right.
Are oriented towards students.
Absolutely. And that's the, that is the reasoning behind the choice of those numbers for the rating last year. And then the forms that we put them on, that's why the goals are in a different order. That's why we're renumbering them.
I'll make that a...
As they stand here...
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. So we have motion?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Excuse me, could you just, for the record, instead of saying the sheet, could you just say goal number one is goal number two?
Okay, let me go do that now because I know what they mean.
That would be helpful.
Goal number two is 12 points. Student learning. Goal number one is rated eight points. Professional practice. Goal number three is rated...
Twelve.
12 points. District improvement. And goal number four is rated eight points. Family and community engagement.
Okay.
Yes, please.
You know, I would like to address the bell curve and talk a little bit about that.
We didn't do a vote.
Oh.
Because I stopped you in the middle.
Right. That's why.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I think second was somebody over there, but I don't know.
Yeah, we had a...
I think I did.
So do I take, now I take, now I need a motion.
We have a motion.
We have the motion. And a second for the points?
I just need a vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
I think that as an educator, it's vital to reflect on your practice and to improve on your practice for the benefit of students because that's truly why we're here. I certainly appreciate Mrs. Morgan in making her comments. I also appreciate Mr. Sweat and his comments because I think what we have to do as educators is to define what we expect as excellence and what we expect as needing improvement. And I think that we would be selling our students short if we failed to do that. So while I appreciate all sides, I think it's vitally important that we work together to establish, to further establish the criteria that we're using to measure our educators by, to work with them and to help them raise. I know that there is an evaluation committee that meets on a regular basis. I know that Dr. Schwam works very hard with her evaluators and we have constant conversation about how to do that. And that is something that we do not neglect and that we continue to look for improvement.
I'd like to make a comment on the same area because I do have some agreement with Mr. Sweat. I have said before, when we were changing our school structure, our leadership structure, I remember the conversations. We were going to have these people who, more people to evaluate. And I said at the time, and I said it more than once, it isn't just evaluation, it's supervision. That is the other side of the coin. Are we going to have the leaders who are able to supervise these teachers, not just go in and evaluate, but actually do the supervision and understand what these teachers are teaching so that they are evaluated properly? If they need help, do we have the right leadership to develop action plans? Because what we want to do is to help our teachers become the best that they can. And if they're having a hurdle with some, with some, with something that they're working on, that we should be able to have an action plan. And then if that doesn't work, we know what we're supposed to do. It's not supposed to be a good evaluation. But I see that as the very important part of what leadership does or what an evaluator does. The second part is, you know, we can, that I've said before, and I'm going to say it again, that we can do all the planning, all the planning and all the professional development and plan the curriculum. And if the teachers cannot produce in the classroom where the rubber meets the road, rubber meets the road, which I've always said, there is a problem. I'm not saying this is a big problem. I'm just saying that this is important to have, to get to the point where the teachers have all the tools they need to do their jobs and the right evaluators are in there to evaluate and supervise. That is my point. I think we have talented staff here and I think that's a very important part of running a school is to have the right people evaluating, but also supervising and helping teachers become the best that they can. Does anyone else have any comments? Next, we have the school committee reports.
You ready for me?
Yes.
Policy review committee?
Yes, policy review.
Okay, so the first policy that we reviewed was the criteria for approval of a private school by the Wareham School Committee. There were a couple of small changes in the middle of the first page. Just some titles were changed. And on the second page, there were a couple of changes under school staff and under records.
Does anyone have any questions about this, these changes? Do I have a motion to approve the criteria for approval of private school?
So move.
Second?
Second.
I do have one question. Under records, in parenthesis, it says removed fairly. Where, what was it removed? Where is it removed from?
I believe the word fairly was removed at that point in the sentence.
No, no, no. But where in the sentence was it removed? From where in the sentence was it removed?
Prior to this, it stated is fairly maintained and now it would just be is maintained.
It used to say fairly maintained. Good choice to remove it. Okay.
Did I get the motion? I forget.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Five, zero, zero. Yes?
Okay, the next policy, reconsideration of instructional resources. There were no changes to this policy.
So do we vote it again if there's no changes? Yes. Yes. Vote. To approve the policy as it stands?
It's up to you if you want to.
Go ahead.
I was part of the group that approved this back in 2013, it looks like. I must say, I read it slightly differently today compared to then. And all I could think of was a student out of context reading ISIS or watching ISIS videos as part of our library. And I thought to myself, wow, if it's out of context as compared to, in the context of a teacher being there talking about ISIS as a religious force and the terrible things it has done, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess my problem is, in our attempt to be incredibly bipartisan, no, impartial is the better word, impartial about ideologies or even religions, I guess you could say, but our ideologies, have we gone too far? Because I think, I would love to insert the word scholarly somewhere in that. Make available a balanced collection of scholarly, primary, and factual material. Because if it's scholarly, at least it's gone through some kind of review process rather than, in this, the way it's written here, it could be just propaganda. Am I making sense to anybody? Guess not. Okay.
No, I understand your point, but I don't know if it's really necessary.
I'm understanding the point, too.
I mean, I think that it probably, it's just good practice that it would be, you know, reviewed and, I don't know.
And no matter what word you put in there, it could always be twisted to someone's, like you say, taken out of context.
Right.
No matter.
It's an attempt at a difficult, with a difficult policy in my mind. So I realize nothing is going to be perfect. It's ultimately words that can be used as they see fit. But I would like to amend the policy to put the words scholarly after primary on the second line under ideologies. Does that make sense, Michelle?
I'm just writing down the second line.
Collection of scholarly, primary, and factual. This is in the ideologies paragraph.
I don't know what you mean by scholarly.
Written by scholars. Yeah, I know. What's the definition of scholar? Yeah, you're right.
Would educational be it?
I think we can hopefully assume educational, but I'm willing to have almost any adjective modifier that would filter the material down a little from straight propaganda down to something appropriately contextual for a high school student or lower.
How about banning any propaganda? Any propaganda materials? I mean, that's...
That sounds like something, that sounds like something a lawyer would have a great deal of fun with.
Well...
Free speech comes to mind.
I'm trying to help you.
I know you are.
I'm trying to think, you know, if we can't think of the adjective, think of what we don't want and put it in there. Think of what you wouldn't want.
How about you bring it back to the committee? And make it decide.
You want to, yeah, you want to bring it back to the committee? And see if there are any, anything going with the discussion?
I genuinely appreciate that. Thank you.
But I will suggest your work.
Then I'll make an amendment that we, let's the table it until it's gone back to the policy review committee.
Okay.
A second?
A second.
And vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Okay, next.
The next policy is library material selection and adoption. On this one, towards the bottom of the page, there was a sentence removed and then some new language added. And those are the changes.
Any discussion?
I'm trying to bring it up here. Oh, no, I'm fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the policy as written?
In fact, I like the new language.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So move.
A second.
Was that the committee's language?
I don't know.
Or did we get it from some lawyer?
We were very scholarly.
We were, you were very scholarly, yes.
A second. I'm just looking for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Laurie. And the restraint of students?
I have a different one next. Under restraint of students, is it at the very end? Under complaints, director of student services was added and then the email address or the website address on the bottom was amended. Those are the only two.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Go ahead.
Bumble.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero. Next, is there any other business?
There's one more policy.
There's one more.
Sorry.
Student exchange program. The very last sentence was changed to read by service organization's student exchange program or hold an F1 student visa.
Yes, Jeff?
So this, unlike the old one, I thought I read this, this now allows us to charge, correct? And the old one didn't. So that's a change that wasn't highlighted. I'm not saying I have a problem with that.
Right.
But, so I think, I'm not sure if anybody else caught that, but I, I did notice that. So people should be aware of it. But the second issue is, when I read the last sentence, I was trying to see where the and and the ors and all that kind of stuff should be. So students entering the Wareham Public Schools on an exchange state, exchange program, student exchange program must be sponsored?
We would, we would like to take that out. So must hold, must hold an F1 student visa?
Oh, the yellow, all the yellow is being taken out?
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I just looked at it again and this was approved last May, but it's back for approval again because that sentence should come out. Do you understand?
Yeah, I saw pink and yellow and I...
I understand all the colors, yes.
Yeah, the pink, because it, pink says delete, but the other portion is yellow. Okay. So all it's going to say is must hold an F1 student visa?
Yes.
Okay, that clears that up. Okay. So, but you agree the change does allow us to charge now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Could I motion to accept this policy?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Wake up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero. We can get through these quickly. Okay, any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.